All right, by my watch, it is 6:00 PM. Would you like to call me in an order for the Woodbury Select Board Monday, the 17th, 2023? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda at this point?
I've got a couple things.
All right.
We've got an application for an emergency management director that we should act on right away. And also, there's a request from Nichols, Dan Road, flood-related. I don't know if you had a chance to read all your emails yet.
Uh, I'm sorry, it was Litney.
You're right.
So, we will address those after we do public comment.
Okay.
Any other adjustments to the Select Board agenda as published?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, we've approved some bills and paper orders, the rest will be approved immediately following the meeting. The minutes from the June 26th meeting have not been reviewed, we will review those and sign those immediately following the meeting, if not during so. We're now open for public comment. If you would be willing to raise your hand and state your name. Sir?
Goddard Graves on Sand Hill Road in Woodbury. Of course, I'd be a louse if I didn't add my voice to the chorus of praise for everybody in the town structure. Uh, I've been watching the work at Mark's place and I marvel at what's happened and many, many, many other things. And also, please, you don't have to put on rubber boots to be serving, I'm very conscious of it, everybody could do. I would like to raise an issue which is, which I could relate to the current problem, but I, but I won't, because I won't insult your intelligence, I think you can see the connection when I bring up something that has been a running sore in the community for at least two years. And that is the Walker property on Sand Hill Road, which has gone from being illegal from the point of view of health and safety code, ugly from the point of view of aesthetics, dangerous from the point of view of sanitation or lack thereof. And now it's becoming a automobile graveyard. I went by there today and I see a couple of hoods stacked up in the backyard along with a variety of non-functioning appliances, vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. And this in a property where the residents have no, they have no sanitary facilities. The sanitary facility is the ditch bank, which has been, of course, flushed out lately by 10 inches of rain, but I don't think that's the way we want to do it. I've had this discussion with a variety of people, all of whom are well-intentioned, but all of whom say nothing can be done. It's not true, never say never. And I am, the last discussion I had, I think, was with Bob Martin, I wish he were here. And I like Bob and I trust him, but he said, "Well, the city will just break, the town will just rack up legal bills, going to court to do something where nothing will happen." I am not made of money, half the people in this room know me very well, know that I'm not made of money. I am willing, out of my pocket, to pick up maybe seven or eight hours of billable time for an attorney to move this thing along, out of the "let George do it" mode into something meaningful. This cannot go on. And this is, and this is without even raising the issue of some of the other things that happen on that property, which are more appropriately addressed through law enforcement. But everybody on East, well, I won't say everybody, great numbers of people on Bliss Road, Sand Hill Road, East Hill Road know what a running sore this is and something's gotta be done. This, as I say, this has been going, I've had this conversation in one form or another with people from the town for at least two years. The irony is, as I was coming up here to this meeting, I saw Sand Hill Road, right in front of the place, being repaired by a good neighbor who's tired of seeing all his neighbors getting their cars out of alignment and getting their bumpers cracked, which is great because it's gonna facilitate the drug dealing out of the truck. But that's not, you know, my neighbor knows all about it, but he's seeing a bigger picture. I'm seeing a bigger picture that seems to have no end. And I, as I say, I will, if the town is worried about legal fees, I'll pay eight hours of billable time for an attorney to take that clown in, or it's one property owner, into the appropriate jurisdiction and get something done. There's a legal, a health, an aesthetic, an environmental issue, complex of issues, and they are not fixing, George will not do it, George is not here, we have to do it. Yes, Litney?
Goddard, I don't know exactly where you're talking about, is it the place on the corner?
Not the place on the exact corner, that's a triangular plot.
Yep.
That's, that's actually Walter Diddy's trying to sell that, which right now would be like trying to sell, you know, a 55-gallon drum full of toxic waste. And these folks next to him are basically taking money out of his pocket as he's trying to sell it. I'm not, I have no involvement in that transaction. But as you come up, as you on to Sand Hill Road proper, from that triangle, which is still Dady's,
Yep.
Then there's a little tiny trapezoidal piece of ground, most of which actually is a marsh. And some, when they moved in, they got a load of gravel and then put it in a shack and, and honest to God, it looks like gates or bouldock on a filter through your worst nightmare.
So we're talking coming from Bliss Road, going on to Sand Hill Road?
Yes, down toward, yeah.
Okay.
Toward my place, toward 14.
Got it.
It is, it is fairly celebrated, it is celebrated in the sense that people in the area, there's a rich variety of descriptions for it, all of which are colorful, but all of which are inadequate.
And how many people do you think live there? Two?
I think permanently one, but there's a steady procession of people in and out. We have some pretty good prima facie evidence of prostitution and drug trading. And I know people don't want to talk about this and nobody wants to knock on the door and I don't want to get shot either. But if, or if it came down to the town serving papers on Mr. Walker and you have to pay the sheriff service fee, I will pay the GD fee, but we have, this has been brought into highly relief by the storm because all the garbage they're accumulating and human waste, we now, it's, we now all now get to share that. End of rant. Come by and look if you don't know.
No, appreciate it. Thank you, sir. I'll probably comment.
Yeah, Jake. My name is Jake Chaddick, I live across from the fire department and
The Widdow's Lighthouse.
Yeah. It's the one that's got that huge rock collection scattered all over my yard and down my driveway. Should contain it, but, uh, so, and, and it's quite clear looking at the place that it's in dire need of work, and so I don't expect, first, I want to echo what he was saying about the town, because when I, you know, this, I've been here for three and a half years and I absolutely love this town and everyone's come by and, uh, I do, I, you know, but in this emergency, you know, all of a sudden, there's like all this food and I wasn't expecting that, I was just coming over to work on my house and I can't thank this town enough for what, seeing all the, all the people reaching out to the neighbors and helping out and certainly have helped me and they were digging out that, uh, the brook and it was great to see. But I guess, you know, my basement is still currently, oh, I emptied the basement out and it currently just fills right back up, it's about five feet. And I can get it down into, onto the floor of the basement and so forth, but the next day, it's up to four and a half, five feet. I, I can't move forward with anything, I have people lined up. The electrician, plumbers, everything going in there, but they saying the same thing, the water level's gotta go down. And I, you know, Diane out, but earlier today, it's a clear visual of what has happened. The water fell up high, there's a gajillion rocks still left in the brook. And I'm just, I just, I don't expect it to be done overnight, but I guess I would kind of like to have some type of maybe timeline of anything that's going forward with that particular area because again, I cannot, there's no power, there's nothing there, obviously. The longer it sits there, it's obviously the mold issues and the house isn't smelling all that great. So, um, I would just, I just want to let you know that that's what's going on in my particular place. And again, as new dock to this town, I love it, I don't want to have to move if I don't have to. It's, it's been great there, but that's, that's where we are right now.
The problem is a brook filled up with all kinds of gravel.
Debris.
Yeah, we have a lot of debris in the brook.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Jake was asking today in an email and I followed up whether the town could dig out the brook some more, but I thought maybe as a geologist, you'd have a better idea of whether that could possibly work or whether the
Dig them out and aim to where it was before.
We can, we can find a way to dig it down.
They did it after I read, they dug that.
And, but unfortunately, that is a temporary solution. It's gonna be enough to, but
But there's a gender there anyways.
We can only go down so far. Yes, sir?
Right.
So, but if we, so if we can clear that, that'll help us dry things for you. The long-term solution is much more complicated than that, I'm afraid. Because then we have to worry, well, we have some covert issues, obviously.
Right.
They go across the road, we've been dealing with those for, well, before I was on the Select Board, for actually routing that stream system.
Oh, rerouting it?
Rerouting it.
Oh, that would be
Well, it would be pretty nice, wouldn't it?
It'd be a big project.
It would be a big project. But this, but what we can do in the short term is we can clear those, we can dig it out and clear them, let it flush, that should be able to dry out your lower structure.
Yeah, right.
And then, we've got some other issues that we have to deal with.
Sure.
But at least we'll have a short-term solution. That's the, that's the best we can offer at this moment.
Right there.
I think that we can make that work.
Because it could get the water levels down.
We can get the water levels down so that we can put like some pumps in.
Yeah.
Make sure that it stays dry, get it dry, stays dry.
The bottom where I have it in the house is on, I mean, it's still gonna come through.
It's gonna
If it can keep up with what's coming in there, I don't worry about that.
Okay.
But I can't, can't do anything in 10 hours when it's up to five feet.
Yeah. So I think that our first, first attempt is to clear it, let it flush, and then try to move on to, you know, bigger picture issues.
So you would
And I think that we can, we can do that within the next week.
Okay.
I don't think that we can do it in the next day.
Okay, yeah, and I don't expect it to be done overnight.
In the next week or so, I think that we can find a mechanism to, to get that clear.
Okay.
And that might help properties that are immediately downstream, if you all as well.
And also, how about the post office?
It will.
Yeah.
So that was, that was something that we were trying to, to make work, we're gonna still try to make it work. But that's the immediate solution. In terms of all the material that's up in the side yard there, we're gonna have to pull that back. I'm not so sure how we're gonna move that stuff around, hopefully we can actually take advantage of it.
Oh, yeah.
Use it.
Refill.
Yeah.
The fire station wouldn't mind us, you know, moving some material over onto the other side. So that's, that's what I can offer at the moment, but I am, I'm working on it.
Yeah, and I appreciate it.
No, no, thank you for being here.
That's, I, you know, I'm happy to hear that, then six months down the road and my house is past due.
No, we, we, we're not gonna let it go. We just, we want to get, I mean, we need to get that clear, I mean, to be honest, we want to get it clear for your house, we also want to get it clear for the road because the next time it floods, which could, at this point, be days from now, right? Because we're still pretty, pretty saturated.
Yeah, so is the town's bucket, what do you mean, like the excavator big enough to go over there?
We can, we can do it with town, with town gear. We have, we have rental, rental materials as well. So we have a rental that we've been using up at, um, at the Swenson Quarry. We're gonna bring the material down, we can always bring that down as well. I will talk with Alfred and try to put a timeframe on it. I don't have one right this second, but within the week, I think we can make something work.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
That's my bet, that's my, best I can do, I'm sorry that I can't give you something specific.
There we go, please, phone numbers, if you want to call him or
Yeah, please, it's 802-
01?
0207.
734?
Yep.
0207?
Yep. Feel free anybody call.
All right.
He's on Harvard TV now. Hope you like mail order stuff.
Yeah, that's right. Mine's already published, so you can go and check the mail if you want to.
He is from Morseburg.
So, that's, that's, and I appreciate it, thank you for being patient with us.
Yeah.
All right.
I understand, thank you.
All right, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Were you able to, I sent Paul an email to see if they could get that pump over to you again, did you?
How's your pump, if it's more than six inches, we can't really pump with our pump.
If it's a lot more?
If it's less than six inches.
Oh, well, oh, no, 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 it's, it's, every morning it's five feet.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, what I think we can do then is we'll just leave it over there with you. You might have to get gas for it.
No, I have gas.
Okay.
I have everything.
Are you headed back down there at the station after a call right now? So you could ask him, just tell him I authorized, go ahead and leave the pump in over there.
I could, I could put it in Chinese garage there.
Yeah, just wherever it doesn't do that, because I don't know if I can get it, because I gotta go to Dorset tomorrow, so I'm not gonna be
So it's at the station now?
Yeah, there's guys at the station right now, so just stop in, tell them to get this, that pump, it's up in the trailer.
Okay, all right. Up in the trailer. I really appreciate it.
No worries, yep.
All right, thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you. Of course, now my truck won't start, so. All right, thanks again.
Thank you, guys. Peter, myself, we had to land the helicopter, it was hell school. Now uncovered the stuff.
You look pretty good, Paul.
Paul, have you looked at the post office today?
I have not.
I was just wondering how much water came up in there.
I'll go peek at it.
Because the federal, the postal inspector's supposed to come in tomorrow.
Yeah, show them that green card, because the state inspectors were here yesterday.
Yep.
Put a green card on it, so according to the state fire marshals, your building is perfectly capable of being used.
Okay.
So if they want to argue otherwise, the powers that be have said it's got the green card.
Okay.
How's the basement?
Hmm?
How's the basement?
At the town office?
That's what she's asking.
Yeah, I'll look at it when I leave here.
No, I was at the post office with Paul.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it today.
Yeah, the one at the town hall, at the town office, no more water has come in there.
We'll check the post office.
And there's a chance I'm gonna be able to get a, an industrial dehumidifier Wednesday.
For the town office.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it's time, and I'm gonna purchase some extension cords.
Heavy-duty extension cords.
I had Coraro extension cords and I'm not doing it. We're gonna have to stop.
It's a good cord plug, I already had one fire in the town caused by a cord, so be careful. Just keep an eye on where they're not in water and stuff. And drying equipment.
All right, so we've gone off track a little bit, we're still open for public comment, please, sir.
Mark, Mark Carr, I just want to again thank you, thank you for Dave and Greg coming out to East Hill and still being the road and we appreciate it so much.
So you can get out here now?
Yes.
But you still brought him?
No, I was, I was the laboratory rat, I was the first person to test it and I'm still here.
Great.
Modernized, everything's good.
Get it here.
And how many, okay, well, we'll get to that.
Another public comment. It's not part of public comment, but as a, just a towns person, I'd like to say that the work that people came out and did to gut the fire station, work on the town hall.
And the post office.
And the post office.
Yep.
Is greatly appreciated. So everybody who came out, can't say how much.
Stop point. Now it's weird.
Yep, can't say how much I appreciate all that work.
And if anybody picked up tools that wasn't theirs on Saturday, they can drop them off at the town office and we'll try to get them back to whoever they belong to.
It was like a tornado, you saw it, so stuff was going everywhere, so I can't promise.
In particular, there's a Makita drill floating around out there that
Oh, is it yours?
No, it's not mine, but it didn't make out to its owner.
So there, is it blue, what color is it?
Like teal color.
Teal color, okay, Makita drill, okay, a drill or a drill driver?
I don't know if it's a drill or driver, he called it a drill.
Okay.
Could be either.
I'll keep an eye out for it now that I know.
Okay.
Thank you all, so thank you. Any other public comment before we move on? Ms. Brandy, may I please have the, um, whoa, excuse me, uh, Mr. Icky, may I please have the town clerk's report?
Well, basically what we have is the flood. And I've got the office closed this week to any public coming in. When we're there, the door is locked, so they have, if they think they need to come in, they have to knock. And I also have the message changed on the phone telling them that the office is closed.
Thank you, Ms. Icky. Anything that we need to do at the town office as general work this week?
This week? At some point in time, we're gonna have to get that pipe replaced where the water was coming in.
Right.
That's a pipe from where?
Have you looked at that at all? I'm sorry.
On the subject pipe.
All right, so Mr. Larry, if he has looked at that, something that we could potentially address?
Yeah.
Or should we be hiring out for that?
I can probably squeeze some time.
No, I don't, that's not what I was asking.
I mean, it's, it's sort of tricky because, because it's right where it comes out of the concrete and then it goes to an elbow.
Yep.
And it's all solid pipe, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit tricky to change that.
Seems like we need to hire.
What is it?
Hire out.
Okay.
I mean, we might be able to hack it, you know.
That's not, that's not what I want, but I want, I would like to fix it.
Okay.
All right, so, um.
And then, and that being said, I want the sub-pump permanently put into the ground?
And we found some things, when we pulled out that subfloor.
Yeah.
There are some places where we could put.
But is it, it's off onto the, the other side, it's not in where the
It's not where I scooped a lot of poop out, no, it's, it's not, yeah, I did that.
I danced in it.
I'm sure, but what pipe are you talking about?
So you and I are hanging out together, hanging out poop. So what we need to do is try to identify a contractor. I'm happy to try, but if you all have the time to make a few calls, I feel like that would be a pertinent thing to, to work on.
Yeah, I had somebody suggest that we talk to Matt Clark. What is it, All About Basements or Everything Basement-y or something?
Yep.
To have him come up and see what he suggests.
The irony is, he's probably flooded out, you know where he is.
Yep, he's sunk in water. But Let's, let's, if you're willing to, Ms. Brandy, I appreciate that.
And she was gonna also have the same guy look at the concrete in the front room, it's all kind of crusty, she said, once they took the plywood up for some kind of eventual finish.
I think the, the most important
Don't want the floor.
Yeah, I know, it's not the most
The most important part right now is to, is to get the pipe fixed so that we can actually set up a system to keep the basement as dry as we possibly can. And it's really not about the basement at this point, it's about the rest of the structure. Dry basement?
Right.
Dry town hall, dry town office. That's what we're going for, let's start with that. So if you all are willing to make some calls, we'll try to find the money for it. Some reasonable, all right, thank you, Ms. Icky. May I have the town treasurer's report, Ms. Brandy?
Bro, if you spend all the money, it's all right.
Yeah, all right.
So we did, since it's been a while, we've had our last meeting. I might as well throw the bad news in first. So general fund balance as of July 1, we had a balance of $83,874.32 in the general fund. Highway, as of July 1, negative $31,240.43.
Would you repeat that, please?
For the highway fund, negative $31,240.43.
Okay.
So, as of July 1, as you went through bills, there was a bunch due. So currently for the general fund, we are negative $38,905.15. With our fund accounting, we are borrowing against the other funds. So getting into the nitty-gritty, here are your balance sheets, please, and thank you, Robin.
This is Alfie, Lizzy and Diana.
Yep, and Chris is underneath here.
No, Chris is over there.
Thank you. So if you can shoot Alfie's over to him. I need to be more, making sure he's got one for the highway. Sorry, Alfie.
Thanks, sir.
So we went from $83,000 positive on July 1 to $39,000 negative on, oh, wow! What happens?
So, um, over the last four weeks, cash receipts took in $3,125.60, delinquencies, $930. I transferred $97,000 from the money market over into checking. We had two state direct deposits, one was for Class 2 and 3 roads, the amount of $18,507.07. The other one is for property tax adjustments for the current tax revenue year of $19,234.09. Payroll, $22,244.83. Accounts payable, $83,440.80. So today, I put in a claim for the town office through VLCT. And I had also printed out, so, so the fire department and the town office.
Did you get a copy of ours?
I did, yep, so both of them, if you want to see them. I took photos of the basement, I applied them to the attachment. Then we received, um, I received an email tonight from Keith saying that we have until August 12th to declare or register as part of that FEMA to create, and the second page is just, I screenshotted it, we have to create an account. And yeah, I haven't even, I haven't got that far yet. They also submitted forms that, um, that start the whole, all 64 roads, and I don't even know if that list is accurate, because it's an old list. And then applying photos from Alfie and descriptions and work and
There's a lot of people.
There's a lot, so all those forms are gonna be each individual road, what the materials we use, the photos.
So if VLCT pays our claim, does that mean we don't submit it to FEMA or?
We submit it everywhere.
So the way this works is you're required to submit to your insurance company first.
Yeah.
I believe when they don't cover, you're eligible for FEMA funding. Some of the emergency response stuff we're doing is beyond that. But I believe if the insurance company covers the damage, then you don't get FEMA money for it. Other than unless you apply for something for mitigation, you know, stopping up. But I can't think of anything off the, you know, it's just some, if you had a bank that kept washing out or something at the town offices, they would go after that, but that'd be later.
So passive
So I don't know if FEMA is gonna even
So passive is gonna give us a percentage is what I was told, they gotta get all their losses calculated, since it's a pool. And I was told that once an adjuster comes, at some point, they'd let us know, full or partial. Again, that's where this FEMA money comes in, that one we hope, and I think they will cover it, cover the losses. All of our bigger problems is actually finding a contractor to do some of this work, it'd be a much bigger problem. I think that's, particularly as we're in crisis state and get
Be back, I mean, I'm actually gonna So we'll say that Jonah, who was here, I don't think he's
Had to, had to leave.
Had to leave?
Might be there.
Jonah Meacham has been willing to be a clearinghouse for us for all issues in town. He set up a Google form, which we're gonna take a look at. I'm gonna pass it around to Select Board, I'm gonna pass it through you all as well, where people can Where people can put issues down. And then it becomes basically an archival record. And that is something that we would like to see.
Yeah, and we'll also need to get that, because the S E O C is calling me every day.
I know, and I'm sorry for that.
No, no, that's okay, we'll need to do it till we get it figured out, but there's one, they file these called two eleven reports. And I've got one, and I'll forward it to you. Once I get ready to do it, some encrypted thing, but when someone files a report, so that we'll get that information.
Okay.
I'll keep it until the new person.
Yeah, so Jonah's willing to do that, he's set up something that people can have accessible, I think that, uh, we can put it up. Once we see it and sort of review it, um, Skip will put it up on the town website, we'll publicize it. And then at least there's like a, a clearinghouse.
Oh, so he's not, I was hoping you were gonna say he was volunteering to do all our FEMA paperwork.
Absolutely not. That's still on us. That's gonna be on us.
Yeah, well.
But there is at least, um, a way to collect the information, which is great. So I'll pass that around, hopefully that'll be live within the next couple of days. And anything goes up there.
So this is.
Any issues that you all have had with your property, with adjacent access to your property. Doesn't matter if the, if the road crew fixed it. Doesn't matter. Gonna put it up on this thing, and we're gonna put it out there.
How does that work with the two-one-one, people still have to call two-one-one or?
Yes.
Everybody has to call two-one-one.
This is just for.
This is just for our records.
They're gonna pass it back through.
They're gonna pass it back through us.
Multiple lists you wanna be on, because everything gets graded and rated by what's happening.
But this is residential stuff you're talking about, right?
I would say, I would say that it should be associated with anything that is even nearby to your residential access.
The, the things they're really interested, like we, we're probably gonna have people that need to get to a medical appointment that might not be able to get there. Or they can't get their medicine for some reason, so that's the important stuff that they really wanna know.
They would like to know.
If somebody shut in and their road's so bad they can't walk, I don't know.
Okay. Ms. Brandy, anything else that you'd like to bring up? I'm sure we'll get there. Mr. Larabee, would you give us an update on the road, sir?
Far from perfect, um, but we are working, we're working on, uh, the East Hill today. Putting a lot of drip wrapped in the bottom of those, very deep ditches. Seems like that's the first thing to do, and then we can go and put the smaller stuff on the top. Uh, I've still got one culvert that is not, not, it's not allowing the road to be open, like, you know. It's sort of low priority right now, because it's not trapping anybody. I did get some really good, uh, headway on bridges today. Dying to share it with you.
Please.
I've got access to three temporary bridges.
Wow.
They don't cost us a nickel.
Good gracious me.
We gotta, we gotta put them in, get them installed.
Wow.
And fetch them.
And fetch them, yeah.
Yeah, go get them.
Where are they in New York?
Nope, that's from our lovely state of Vermont.
Forests and parks.
Forests and parks.
And they're long enough for?
Wow, that's something.
For temporary, yes, they're nothing that we can leave for any length of time.
But they're for a vehicle.
For, yes.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's awesome.
Uh, one of them is a thirty foot, which I'm thinking for.
Uh, Carol.
Dan Jarnes.
Dan Jarnes, Carol, because that's a wider swath.
That is a big, big gap, yeah.
So, I'm thinking of putting that one there, and then the other ones are shorter. So, I would put one at your house, and I would put one at Carol's house.
Lovely.
So, it's gonna take a little bit of work, it's not, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing, because you gotta make, sort of make a flat spot for the bridge to set onto. And then, but it's, it's the cheapest way that I can think of. And it buys us time to do whatever engineering or whatnot we decide to do. Uh, one of the questions that I have is, do we put a bridge in for Jarnes's, or do we take the time and bring that culvert back up and put it in?
I would say no.
No.
To the culvert?
No, to the culvert. I think that there has to be a longer term solution to that, this is not the first time we've had an issue there.
Okay, or at least till FEMA looks at it.
At least till FEMA looks at it. Would like temporary access, but I don't see the reason, that culvert has failed over and over.
Yeah.
It's really just not, it's not a long-term solution.
And it looks like both of those are gonna have to be mitigation projects.
Have to be mitigation longer term. I agree, they have to be longer term mitigation projects. If we can have some sort of structure in there, so that it's reasonably accessible, then we can start to actually pull that together.
For that is that, is, is the fellow that was there, his health condition, he.
I agree.
You know, that's.
I want the temporary access in there, yeah, that should be our highest possible priority.
Yeah. So that's why the, the temporary bridge is very attractive for that, because it's.
And I agree.
A little bit of excavator time.
I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I think that, that is, that's critical access. So, let's make sure that happens as fast as we, as we can make it happen. That would be ideal.
How long can these temporary bridges be used for, do you know?
Uh, they were trying to get that out of me.
Okay.
I couldn't really tell them, because I don't know, it depends on how long, you know, one, how long FEMA takes, the kind of engineering it takes to put the permanent structure in. But I think with these bridges, they're, once they let them out, they're, they're theirs. I mean, they're, they're the, whoever, the occupant that is renting them.
Right.
Typically, they're rented, typically the, the state rents them to like loggers or homeowners that are logging and running through the brooks. They're trying to prevent that, so that's why they have these bridges.
Right.
But because of the situation that we're all in, they're waiving the rental fee.
Great.
It's really nice to know.
And they're really bending over backwards for us, I mean, they really wanna help us out with this.
So, I would prioritize Jarvis.
Jarvis.
And Carol. Those should be, those should be our first two.
Carol, originally I was thinking of just using, they come in sections, these, these bridges. I was thinking of just putting one section there for her to walk across.
Okay.
But if we're doing it, why not make it so she can drive it?
If you have, yeah.
That's what, that's what I would say, let's make it functional for her. Just do that.
Okay.
Be great.
So that's where I'm gonna sort of focus my energy, as well as continuing with the filling in the ruts around town. We have a culvert on County Road.
Yep.
That is gonna call for a four-foot diameter pipe.
Yeah, have you seen, I, I've looked around, I can't find anything like that that's easily accessible at this moment.
Well, there's one available.
Is there?
Yeah, I've got prices on it, and I, again, I've sort of been idling a little bit because of FEMA. I don't, you know, I don't wanna repair everything, and then if, you know. But I feel like.
That one might be, that we just have to, we might have to break the ball on that. After Ms. Brandy has told us we have no money.
Temporary is what they've said.
Yeah.
You can lay it in, but make it look temporary.
Where was that one again?
On the County Road.
By any chance, is there a culvert that goes across Cabot Road before you get to the new quarry entrance? You come down, you go all the way up the hill, and you step down that little grade where it levels off right there, before you get to the quarry entrance? Is there a culvert that goes across there?
You mean the old quarry entrance or the new?
The new one.
The new one. Uh, yes, I'm sure there's a culvert.
Because I was coming down the Cabot Road today, and right around that section, somebody has dumped a lot of tires.
Oh, they've been there.
Those are terrible.
So I don't know if that's gonna affect that culvert through there.
Certainly isn't gonna help any.
It's not gonna help any, but we should probably get them, just so it doesn't.
There's a lot of them.
Thank you to the lazy.
It must've fell out of somebody's trunk, right?
Right.
Thank you, you're the defender of everybody.
But Brandy, you said they've been there for a while?
They have been there for quite a time.
Until after spring cleanup.
Oh.
They waited up during the.
Dipping their furballs.
So I can, I can dip that into at some point.
If, if, if that, I think that that is one of the ones that we just can't, we don't make it look crazy and beautiful. But I think that's one of the ones that just has to be dealt with. Because I've gotten enough calls on that.
I mean, it's, it's.
It's tricky getting through there.
Because it's so narrow, it's only a twenty-foot pipe that we have, and it's washed out twice on us.
Right.
You know, in trying to repair, and then, so I think we should move that up on the list. I did make calls to get prices for it, and he said it was available, so I guess I'll pull the trigger on that.
I would like you to, and we'll try to find a way to fund it. I'm just not sure exactly how.
There's a question for you, Chris.
We may have to go for a line of credit.
A what?
A line of credit?
We'll have to borrow some money until we can see about FEMA.
Oh, union's willing, they're always willing. Just now you go at some point, the documentation decides something.
I'm, I'm on, I'm on L, but.
I mean, I think these are sort of unprecedented, the circumstances that we're in. And I think that we sort of still need to be mindful of the money, but we also need to keep our roads safe.
I don't disagree with you in any way, but, I mean, this is a fundamental safety issue. That continues to fail, it's been failing on and off for a while, keeps getting undercut, it was an undersized pipe to begin with. Oh, Ms. Diana.
Is there any sense to taking that big culvert out of the ravine up there and reusing it, even though you don't think it should be reused at Jarnes's?
It's not big enough, is it?
It's really big, it's like six foot.
Six foot, six or seven foot, and it only calls for a four over there. Problem with that is, it's getting low enough, you'd have to get the, because of the size.
Couldn't use it over there, yeah.
I'm not saying that we don't wanna recover that at some point, if we can. It's not, but I don't think it's appropriate for the Jarvis property.
Right.
And recovering it right now is not my priority, not, it shouldn't be our priority.
It's not hurting anything.
It's not hurting anything, it's doing fine right there, at some point, we should recover it, we can maybe reuse it, but it's not appropriate for Canorid. I don't think. And there's another priority up, on, on, on that area. Is that reasonable enough?
Absolutely, yeah.
I thought you were just wondering if that was possible.
Ms. Diana, I think you have a really good point.
That culvert is valuable, we'll use it.
We can reuse it, but recovering it right now, I just think that we can wait on that. We've got a little bit more warm season before we can pull it out of there and use it. Okay. I'm gonna backtrack for a moment, I apologize, because Jonah is here again. No, no, please, no, I saw you earlier, and so, I mentioned it. So, uh, I'm just going back to what we talked about a little bit earlier, which is our FEMA reporting. And also collecting as much information as we possibly can about, um, private damage. Jonah's been willing to be a clearinghouse for us. He has a Google sheet that he sent to me, uh, I'm gonna ask the select board to review that, I'm gonna send it around. And, um, once we all feel good about it, we're gonna make it active. We're gonna put it, uh, Skip Lindsey is gonna help us put it on the town website. And then, that can be the immediate clearinghouse for town issues. That being said, two-one-one is still where we have to report. And I just wanna make that as part of public comment, we have to report the two-one-one for all of those issues. So, this is an archive for the town, and we can still use it for FEMA, potentially. Jonah set up something that's really great, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the help, alright? We're gonna just review it as a board, and then we'll make it active.
Yeah, I'll just say for, without getting deep into the technical pieces of it. The way it's set up so that you can, you can submit for either public damage, reporting public damage or private damage. And when anybody submits, and if they submit photos, it will create a folder with their, with their photos in it. That has the location and their last name as the name of the folder. So that'll all be organized, and then it'll also create a spreadsheet with links to those photos with all their information. So, it should be pretty simple once it gets rolling.
Jonah, thank you.
Will there be like a form that people can fill out and not have to understand Google Docs and all that stuff?
It should be, take a look at it, I tried to keep it simple without too much, there's, it asks for a first name, last name, email. And then there's a drop-down menu, somebody who, I, I've only been in Woodbury a few years, I tried to get every road name for the public property. So there's a drop-down menu for the road names for private property, you put in your address. And that's about it, I tried to keep it pretty simple, and then it's just a description of what the damage is.
And they fill it out, um, and then send it to somebody?
And they hit submit, and it's done.
Submit, oh, okay.
Yeah, and then it shows up, you know, and I set up a, I set up a Woodbury Flood twenty-twenty-three email. So that I can give that login to Robin or to whomever else, and the town can own it. And you can have access to all of it, and so it should, fingers crossed. Hopefully, it's, it's simple, you can fill it out on a phone, you know, phone or laptop or whatever, so.
That's awesome, Jonah, thank you for that.
Yeah, that's absolutely terrific, yeah.
Yeah, people keep asking questions.
Yeah. And then there's, and, and you'll read the description, I put a description in there, and I also put in the, this is in addition to two-one-one and a link to two-one-one. So that people hopefully don't get confused that this is like their FEMA.
Okay.
Application, because it's not, but.
So if it's not, then how did it get to FEMA?
That will be independent.
Yeah, they, they, anybody, I mean, yeah.
It's independent.
Yeah, and the state was announcing today that people should be submitting on their own to FEMA, and FEMA has, two-one-one has their own form. And FEMA has their own form, and so this is more for, it's more for the town to have information. And I don't know what the process is for you all as, as an official submission.
What good is it to the town to have that information, are we helping people submit to?
I don't know, and that's a question for you all.
Because it's getting, we need to know we have it, so that it can be addressed potentially. And then it's been reported to the town, it gets through two-one-one, because I'm getting the reports back through two-one-one that I'm gonna pass to you guys, or we do that.
We need to have this record.
What, what you're finding is every layer, all these people coming to town are basically, uh, establishing thresholds for FEMA as the damage goes up. Our, the amount of money that's percentage-wise goes up, so you wanna keep documents, a real pain in the butt, but that's how it works.
We have to document this stuff, and this is where we start.
Yeah, seventy-five or ninety, you know.
And I'm certainly willing, if, depending on what kind of response we see, if it makes sense to do some kind of reporting drive at the town hall on a weekend someday. And have people come in and, you know, have five or six of us sitting at laptops and just letting people tell us what the damage is. And airdrop us pictures or whatever.
Are they gonna be able to use that for maybe to submit to FEMA? People are already confused by the two or three, four steps.
Well, let's not make it more confusing.
We've had multiple layers of inspectors coming to town.
It's a good place to start.
Yeah, so with all the photos out there, and each road we're having to, to do that for, it makes it, yeah.
Yeah, this is the start of a clearinghouse.
So this is particularly for flooding, because there's a lot of events that.
This could be, at this point, let's take advantage of it.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, is it, is it specific to flooding events, or is it a tree down, is it a tree on a wire, other, other hazards?
I think it's all above, isn't it?
We would, we, we were thinking about it originally for flooding, but I think all of the above is actually what's most, most useful.
Well, FEMA's got a lot that's associated with this disaster.
Right, but this is.
Which fall a tree down would be.
Okay, I'm sorry.
At one point, we're saying that it's nothing related to FEMA, uh, FEMA. But now you're saying that, that FEMA's gonna use it for their records.
Well, so just, I'll clear that, what they're using it at the state level to set the threshold of damage, how much damage there is. I think that's the only thing the state's using it for, I don't think FEMA gets this information.
Right, so you're saying this information.
I'm a little confused.
Goes to the town and to the state and to FEMA?
At this point?
They would get it to FEMA, then you get it to your, it's really complicating.
Let me make it totally clear at this moment. The archival information that Jonah's gonna collect with this is all for the town, period. That's it, we can stop there. Everything else has to be independently done. Everything else has to be independently done. Either by a homeowner. Or by the town independently. To two on one or FEMA, those are independent, but we need an archive for the town. Because at some point. They're gonna come back to us. And this is the archive that we're gonna set up. That's, so Alfred. It's that straightforward, we just need to have it for the town archives.
Like I said, there's, there are other events. That cause safety hazards. Nothing to do with water. High water, low water, none of that, there's, there's other. I was wondering if it's, if it's grouping all this together or if it's just flood related.
I don't think we've gone this far yet. We're just starting to get this going.
The document that I have created could be. Then utilized for that in the future, it could be copied and utilized for that in the future certainly. And I'm happy to help with that when, when, when the time is right, but at this moment, it's set up for the, for flood damage.
But really, it's just for residential, right, it's not for.
No, 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 no. So the, the way the form is set up and you'll see it when Chris. First questions are, first question is email, first name, last name, phone number, are you reporting public? Or private property? If you're reporting public, it takes you to an area that then has a dropdown menu with every road in Woodbury. And you're reporting on that. Or, or it's got an other. And then it says if you're reporting other, are you, you know, are you talking about something you saw at the school or somewhere else, right? So that's one section, if you say private, then it says, put in the address and the description.
Okay, so is, is that something that the road guys are gonna have to do in addition to whatever they're filling out for every incident?
They don't have to do anything.
It's for the public, right, it's for the public.
This is for the public to utilize.
So if they see their road washed down and it's a town, now they can.
I took a bunch of pictures today, I haven't submitted it yet of my road and I'm gonna submit into the, I was waiting to hear. It's gonna go live and then I'll submit my pictures for my road so that the town knows, hey, you know, and then potentially. Alfie can, when he thinks he's done everything, you could go into that spreadsheet and he could say, yeah, I did all these, oh wait, I don't know about that one.
It's really, it's, it's really for us, it's for the town.
Yes, for the town.
If we use this beyond that, great, but this is for us.
Yeah.
We would also document pictures, uh, that maybe you didn't get of the road.
Yes.
Earlier, so.
Could turn into FEMA.
That you could turn into FEMA later, so it would be really good.
And you could certainly, you know, I wouldn't have the road guys do it, but they could give their photos to, you know. I volunteer or the town, you know, if Robin has time, you know, and they, and they could get put into that form, so it's all in one place.
Until it cracks after opening, please.
Yeah.
Those little children are trying to get in.
Are those your kids?
Actually, there's a mixture of kids out there, but some of them are mine.
Not actually trying to get in, they're just being children.
Oh, okay, they're just looking.
It's yours and mine, so I think it's.
Okay, Jonah, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but.
No, no, that was why I was here, that's the whole reason I came.
Take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Mr. Larrabee, can I jump back to you?
Sure.
You, uh, had on, we had on here, uh, sign B Trans, uh, our grant agreement.
That's something that Robin had for us. Yep.
Okay.
That's for next year.
Okay.
Next year's grant agreement, so that's.
So Michael's not filling these out?
Uh, no, it's gonna be on us. Get these.
I thought he would, I thought he already did, no?
He looked at them, I don't think he signed them.
He just finished the one for this year, I think.
Not for next year.
I think this is just something we have to just sign.
I'm not sure.
No, okay.
Letter of intent.
It's a letter of intent.
Yeah, it's just a signature.
Yep, okay. To that. So Valid Culvert Design is also on the list here.
So, um, there was some correspondence today. Coincidentally, uh, Nat from Rubbles Engineering says what's up with this? And Michael responded and said the grant, he was awarded the contract about a few weeks ago, whatever happened on the paperwork, we didn't know. So I told him that we did approve it.
And.
We had to prove it.
Huh? Yeah, there's paper somewhere that never got sent to him, so, um.
So they.
He sent the contract. And I also chatted with him about. Possibly doing some design work for some other long-term box culvert projects. Here's one for you and one for Lindsay. He said, I'm happy to look at the other sites with someone from the town, if you have jobs shovel ready, sometimes special pots of money open up and follow. Decl- following declared disasters and you can get bumped up. Typically for us to work on these types of small culverts where we design steel culverts or precast. Design fees can be held to less than the six thousand dollars per site. If B Trans can't do the hydraulic study, we add another one to two thousand, I had told him that our limit for having to go off to bid was eight thousand dollars. Uh, the big issue right now is availability of precast concrete boxes, steel pipe jobs have been about four to six weeks. Precast delays are a pre-flood issue, we have three box culverts. That all bid last year and the culverts are just getting made now to install this fall. The recent events will just push timelines out much further, so we've had. Two jobs that changed to steel pipes versus concrete. So anyway, that's the. Up to date advice and. We wanna get him in line to do the design work.
Alfred, have you interacted with Nate Secar at all?
Who's that?
Nate Secar?
Secar, uh, some.
Rubble Engineering?
Yeah, some, but not a lot.
Okay.
I met him at the, at the. The site visit that we did.
That's the only time though, right?
Oh.
And I worked with him when we did the road design over here.
He did, uh, yeah, he did that.
He did this road design.
Yeah, I don't know if that ever got done, but.
Yeah, most of it had done.
Some of it got done. And say.
Some.
I'm gonna say most.
Well, we got to the culvert, yeah, I wouldn't say most, right? It's, it's there.
Let's be honest about it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Alright.
So that's just something to think about if we wanna get some kind of a jump on that.
Is he open to other options of culverts?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I just, I, I only know a little bit, so that's.
Yeah, I mean, I guess as far as. I can award him the contract. But I would like to be able to offer other types of culverts.
I'm not willing to award him a contract.
Just to look, just to have him look at it.
I'm not willing to award him a contract until you guys actually.
Right.
Go and do site visits.
Right.
Okay. So.
So we have to.
Valley Lake project?
This is the, this was originally the Valley Lake project.
Yes, uh, we did award that one.
We awarded that one.
And I just mentioned to him, by the way, we all suddenly have two more possible box culverts needed, could you, if you wanna take a look.
So that one is awarded.
Yeah. But he's still, he's still gonna be flexible of the type of culvert that is.
That's my understanding.
For this one here?
For the Valley Lake.
For the Valley Lake.
I mean, he gave you two options, a steel, a steel pipe.
Or concrete cast.
Concrete cast.
Yep.
There are still other options on the table and that's why I wanna.
Oh.
Offer him.
I would like that conversation to happen.
Yeah, this, this one, uh, wasn't this, this one I'm hearing?
Of we can't get a pipe, we can't get the concrete for another year, I wanna look at other options, cause I know they're available. Cause I don't want this lingering, I don't want us having this conversation two years from now and we still don't have a pipe from the ground.
I totally agree.
So.
I agree.
As an engineer, he needs to be open to other ideas, other options.
He probably knows as much as you, I have no idea what the other option is.
Pretty confident that he, he.
He's in a position, so, he probably knows more than me.
Unfortunately, he's not living around.
He's not boots on the ground, that's right. He's in the office.
He's in the office. And I need.
Not to downgrade anybody in the office.
No, no, the office is fine, that's great, but, um, we need somebody who can actually give him a sense of what's happening on that road system. And. We did award the contract. But it's still open.
Yeah. No, I'm happy to talk to him, absolutely.
So, um, I'll do my best to get you two together. Just for at least a conversation. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
He said, I plan to come over in a couple of weeks to acquire another hour or two of field work. Since we already have data from road design work in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So at that point, he should.
Yeah.
Get in touch with you.
Right, and that twenty twenty data is not helpful anymore.
None, none of it? Hey, with the survey work?
Have you seen that section? Of road?
No.
Yeah, it's a little tougher now.
Things have changed. He'll have to, he'll have to, he'll have to reveal it pretty significantly. I mean, that's a cut bang section. It's failing. It's been failing.
Yeah, so maybe you can just put a note on there that you can try to reach out to me when it comes to that.
Yep.
That next one.
I would like to be there as well personally, actually, that's alright with you. Okay.
I have a question for you, Alfie, about the pipe in the town office. Um, so I understood that the reason it's gonna be really hard to fix is cause it's broken right where it comes out of the concrete. If somebody from the town were willing to cut into the concrete around it and like jackhammer it out. Um, to, just to make it more accessible, is that something that you think you could fix without us having to get a contractor?
You mean fix the concrete afterward?
Uh, fix the pipe and then fix the concrete afterwards, yeah.
I'm not sure that we have to smash the concrete out.
Okay.
Have to look at it closer. Might, cause there's, like the fitting that goes into it is, is a bell end. So if you can break that fitting off of the pipe that goes through the concrete. You could just put slide another one onto it and not disturb the concrete, which should be my effort.
Gotcha.
Be where I would wanna go.
Lindsay?
I can look at it closer before we go too far, I mean, it was, when I looked at it, there was eight, six or seven inches of water in there. And I knew it was that fluid, so I didn't jump right into it.
I don't disagree with your choice.
I was into it, ask Brandon, I was into it, but I just, I wasn't really there to fix a pipe. I can look at it again and get a better diagnosis.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious if there's, you know, if we can limit, um, hiring people, would be also.
If it's right, I mean, we might not even be able to find somebody, it might be leaks and I think that's, that is very important, cause not only for water. Coming out of the septic tank into the foundation, it's also letting gases into the building. Walk into the building and you smell it, it's, so that needs to be sealed one way or another. Sealed faster than later. So I'll take.
I saw, I saw a lot of that.
So back to the subject of the Valley Lake culvert design, he submitted, he sent a draft, um, contract which you have in your email. You should, if you don't have it in your email, does anyone wanna review this or want me to give it to Michael or?
Give it to Michael.
I have mine, I have an email.
Okay.
I'll just put it out there that, um, Alfred Larrabee is our town road performer. He's not our performer.
Wait, no, I get that.
Right, he's not our electrician.
He's our commission, road commissioner.
He's our road commissioner. Right, so there are some things that we do not expect you to be working on. And we appreciate it. But sometimes we have to contract out.
Sure thing, and Alfie, you already mentioned it, cause it sounded like you'd considered it, not cause I expect you to do stuff like that.
Well, it's, it's, it's what I do in my private world.
Which is great, and we'll hire you for that in your private world, but that's not your job.
Okay, he did a lot of road things.
Yep, okay, so let's just be careful about.
Yeah, but at any rate, I can look at it and.
We'd love for you to look at it. We'd love to get some perspective. Okay. Just, let's be careful about that. Okay. Alright, we are well past our agenda time, but, uh. Shell Town advertised to hire a part-time temporary clerical person to manage FEMA in other filings. Miss Diana, you put that on the agenda.
Flood ring, flood related matters.
Do you wanna, Miss Diana, you put that on the agenda, so. What do you think?
I think we need to.
Okay.
Um, according to Paul, Paul was telling me that other towns have already done that, have people in place and.
Some already have town administrators, I know last time we did this, it's a tremendous load, were you around for the last one in eleven?
Yep.
It's a lot of work.
I was not either.
So unless Robin can do it all or one of you all are gonna do it all. And it's the kind of paperwork that has to be kept up. Like it's timely submissions and subrecipient reports and.
So we have to print some money in order to do this, unfortunately.
So I was thinking maybe like, um, twenty hours a week, twenty dollars an hour, up to, up to twenty hours a week as needed. Work at home with your own computer. You know, cause right now the office is kind of. And, uh, yeah, and I would say in three months, Paul said probably should be six months. As needed.
I agree to think about, it's really gonna fall on your all's.
It's gonna fall on us.
Haven't sat in your seat before, if you're like me, you don't have the time to do it.
I don't, I'm gonna be totally straightforward.
When you were in two thousand eleven, who did? The FEMA?
Um, was it a clerk? I don't know, it might have been. I know we had Ann Linder for a while, she did a whole lot of the, yeah, she did a whole.
You had Ann who was really good at this stuff, I don't have Ann anymore.
Yeah, she was, that was probably was when Ann was the assistant clerk. So she was doing all that, that's why you still have that box that says Irene.
Okay, so what it sounds like we should, what it sounds like we should do is write an ad for, for a town position. We'll work on that. And see about getting it published.
Okay, and I'll put a thing out on the clerk and treasurers and see what other towns are.
That'd be lovely.
Maybe we could steal, borrow.
Share, share, let's go with share. Thank you, Miss Brandy. Um, we're gonna put the personnel policy off for now. I, I apologize for that, but that's, that's where we're at. Alright.
So ones after Bon Norman? The ones that we moved from here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna do after.
Yeah, we were gonna do that, you're right, go ahead.
Norman? You stuck your hand out?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, no, that's not why I stuck my hand up. No, it, um, obviously you don't have an emergency management director and I've sent you a note saying I'd be. Uh, willing to fill that position on a kind of an interim basis for a three month period to help get through this and also to. You know, see if any revisions need to happen on policies and so on and hopefully get someone else in and get them trained to do the job.
That'd be great.
I've done the job in the nineties as emergency management director way back when, when Hurricane Floyd hit and everything, that was a whole other game. And, um.
They had federal forms then too.
Yeah, and, um.
And you wrote our, you, you wrote much of that policy?
Yeah, I wrote the original, uh, plan, emergency operations plan for Woodbury back then and, um. And Anderson's change, you know, updated, I haven't seen the new plan yet, but I thought I'd. Uh, take a look and see what's going on with all this stuff and see where I can best fit in to help out and. Try to be ready for the next event, which could happen any old time.
That's right.
So we'd be better prepared for it, so.
We would.
If you're interested in appointing me on that basis, I'd be foolishly willing to.
There are people who are willing to help you as well. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Norman as our emergency management coordinator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, thank you, Norm.
Now we can only get a dog catcher.
I've got one person that I've talked to that might, I'll keep his name quiet until. Decides he wants to actually take that job, but if I can get him in, get him working with Norman.
Yeah.
That would be lovely.
See, don't take, I don't know what's gonna happen, he may come to his senses.
Our.
Well, he might be able to splice me right off. That's okay by me, by the way.
Uh, Norm, I, I will uh, I have your email. I'm gonna send you a little bit of documentation.
Yeah.
If you're willing to.
Emergency management director.
Yeah, if you're willing to take a look, sign off, and then.
Yeah, there, there's lots of stuff to look at. I have to look at the, the plan that, because I hear, you know, she knows what she's doing.
There's revision on there.
Was that their local emergency management plan?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I know, whatever else it is.
I'll send you everything. It's gonna take a minute.
Go right ahead and I'll start trying to fill my brain up with that stuff.
Thank you so much.
Pick the EOC on Norman.
I showed the uh, I showed the uh.
Keep it on the mind, so.
I showed Robin where that big pink binder is, which is, I think, our current plan, although it's really kind of old. And also a drawer full of stuff left over from Ann Linder that if you're willing to go through it and maybe throw it out. That would be a big help for the clerk's office, cuz they have a lot of stuff that they have to get rid of.
A lot of that's in front of you.
Huh?
I don't have to memorize it, I could do it.
No, just scan it, just scan, put it in your memory.
Is the plan currently approved or is that what you're doing tonight?
The plan is approved.
Okay, so we're not eligible.
It is?
It is.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay, so I, so that's what you're gonna send him is this?
Date of birth.
That was that just little several-page thing?
It's short, yeah, but that is approved. That was approved.
The reason I had my hand raised when we're having that little.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Was um, uh, from what I remember, one of my training when I did a lot of work before was that. Good suggestion was that each place where there's an incident to put up a little sign and a number, so when people take pictures and everything. And especially you're gonna have the public doing that and submitting pictures, if there was. A sign at each place with a number, then you know where it is and so on, instead of wondering. And it helps you keep your record straight and others as well. It helped out a lot of towns when they were doing it like that. Might be a little late on some of this, cuz we've already done that.
I don't know if we have a lot of houses that have actually been damaged.
I'm not talking about houses.
Miles of road, they bring me to the sections, and each section gets a number. It's, that's how it's happened to me, the section, then that section, then that section, all on the same road.
There was quite a few houses too, Norm, were great late that uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Really significant. Yeah.
Have an incident number that one uses, and then you have all that information for that. Instead of having.
Yeah.
People describing it differently and.
Of course, you've already got E-911 and all that whole database.
Yeah.
Not the same, huh?
No, it's not. Not when there's a whole road.
Norm, thank you. Not sure how we're gonna backtrack and get that done, but we'll try it.
Yeah, well, wherever it makes sense at this point.
It's worth, it's worth a try.
Should find locations like with a phone, and I don't know if we do this, but drop a pin. I know that's something that people do, like, go to a place, you drop a pin.
Well, hopefully that's what Jonah's website will help us with.
And once FEMA comes, you get to get their mission meeting, you'll have a lot better information.
Yep.
What they're looking for now, cuz it could be different from over thirteen years ago.
Do we have a timeline on when FEMA?
No, no, I haven't heard a thing.
I've only heard anecdotal things.
But I've received nothing.
No, I haven't received nothing directly. I've heard some odds and ends.
Every time I call and get us moved up the list for our stuff, they just say, there's someone's coming, okay.
Yeah, and that's all I've gotten so far, with my phone calls.
Wishes and sunshine.
I don't have any answer for tomorrow. Wish I did. They said within the month. I don't really know what that means.
Airport in Berlin with trailers, so.
Oh.
Hopefully someone will show up.
It looked like Berlin Almendary School was filling up pretty good yesterday, too.
Yes, it was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
With people you meet, or?
With trucks.
Oh, really?
Okay. There's one other.
Go ahead.
Thing that to add to the adjustments. Um, Nichols Pond Dam Road, we haven't had a meeting to discuss what our position is gonna be, but in the meantime, there was a flood. So um. Andrew wrote me this email.
Andrew Meyer?
Meyer. Nick brought his excavator up to Nichols Pond Road and fixed some washouts so that some of the guests could get out. The ditching he did on Nichols Pond Dam Road in the past few years helped prevent damage to that road. However, the Nichols Dam has been breached and caused erosion on one side. Along with the parking lot. Both Hardwick Electric and the Association have contacted Ben Green, one of the Vermont Dam Safety Engineers. Who will be coming soon to inspect Nichols Dam as well as others. While the dam area is eroded and until it can be repaired, it is likely that the dam area may have to be closed to vehicles. I haven't seen, you've seen how bad it is, or?
Yeah.
Is it bad enough to be a safety concern?
Um, it definitely needs to get looked at. It did, it did overtop the dam and it did erode some uh. Somewhat behind the dam, and um, it doesn't look too severe, but I'm not a dam expert.
So anyways, what he asked was, while the dam is eroded and until it can be repaired, it is likely the dam area may have to be closed to vehicles. Hardwick Electric has a meeting tonight, which I'm sure they will discuss this based on their evaluation, and if they have to close the dam for safety and repairs. We would hope to be able to put a sign at the top gate notifying the public of the situation. Would it be okay, this is the request, after all that, would it be okay to put signage at the top gate if deemed necessary to inform the public?
Yes.
Okay. So do you have any more road closed signs over there?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we throw on it?
Yep, um, where exactly do they want it?
If needed, I'll let you know if they will decide to do that.
Seems like it's, we're, we're waiting on the decision of the.
The gate.
Of the gate, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
They, they may just go fix the dam and be done with it.
And quite frankly, they can throw up a road closed sign.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but I'm totally willing. I just need to know where and when.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I wasn't gonna ask you to do that until Hardwick, Hardwick Electric actually figures out what they're gonna do.
Okay.
But we'll communicate over that.
Okay, thank you.
That was the only other addition to our agenda, is that correct? All right. Um, we're putting the Woodbury, well, no, let's uh, go ahead and do the Woodbury Mountain Wilderness.
You have good questions for me, cuz I'm gonna go home and eat them.
Yep, Paul? Um, no.
No, Chris.
Thank you for agreeing.
This Woodbury Mountain, that's the backside of Greenwood Lake, correct?
That's the backside of Greenwood Lake.
Well, I noticed before I came up here, Ireland Turuti posted some pictures around that area. I just tried pulling them up, but I don't have access yet.
I got photos of massive landslide.
It's huge landslide, sir.
It's huge. I never saw anything like it. There's trees that are this big.
Yep.
Right on, right on County Road?
Section, the very first plateau, you go to the left, there's a little draw in there. That whole draw came down. I never saw anything like it.
Wow, really?
Massive pile of trees down there.
Is the road still passable, the class four section?
Oh, no, that's chasms down through there.
Oh, yeah.
That class four section is not, that's no.
The park beyond your house, down to Route fourteen.
Yeah, that's pretty much gone the whole way.
Half a kilometer gone.
Oh, like how?
That thing's gone.
So this item is, we probably premature because they sent around an email saying that. The group, um, no, it was a group, some kind of Jeep group.
A Jeep club.
It's a Jeep.
Yeah, Jeep group.
Yep.
Um, I'm a member of the Vermont Jeep Association, working on a plan for a project with the New England Wilderness Trust along Woodbury Mountain Road. There are, and I think he probably means West Woodbury Road.
He does.
There are a number of illegal bypasses that riders have created that trespass onto Newt's property, and we're planning to install jackleg style fencing along these tracks. And put up signage for both Newt and ourselves, as well as from Tread Lightly, a national organization. That tries to improve off-highway vehicle land use. Part of the project is on the road that is in the town of Woodbury and part is in Elmore, so I'm contacting both town offices to let you know about this planned project as well. And see if there's any process the town would ask us to go through for this. I, I can't imagine, I mean, except for reminding them that the right of way is forty-nine point six feet or whatever it is.
And that's from the center of the road, or?
That's, that's total.
Gotcha.
Total.
Yeah, total right of way.
I would like to put this on the agenda for next time because I think that the people from West Woodbury have not seen this.
No, they wouldn't have anything to do with it really. It's all private property, but.
I know, but they're the ones who would access that, most of that. I'd like them to be part of it.
It's a public park now, but yeah, sure.
They're the ones who access it most directly. So I'd like to make that part of another agenda.
This is when you go into the class four portion of the road.
You're talking the section that goes from West Woodbury and comes out on County Road, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's called either.
Lake Pond Road.
Yeah.
I'd like to put this on the agenda for next time.
Okay. I forgot to bring my ARPA file, so I don't know.
I think that we can wait on ARPA.
Yeah.
What, are your feelings hurt? No, I'm sorry. They're just hurting in general. I think we can wait on ARPA.
Okay. I tweaked my back.
Does anybody have a problem with that? I was waiting on final ARPA distribution. Paul?
Yeah.
I know that we may have some things we need to talk about, but I don't think this is the time.
For us?
Yeah.
Oh, and I'm good, yeah. I don't know if you needed me anymore, it's all the same.
Hmm, no.
If you're on Mill Pond, I just reminded, we're dealing with the Mill Pond, we have, that's the one water source for the uh fire.
For fire protection, yeah. Yep.
That's a, a long discussion, and really, when I wrote this, I put this on the agenda at the last meeting, things have changed since then.
Significantly.
So I don't know if we wanna talk about this or not.
I would rather wait until we have a clearer assessment of what's going on with that.
The uh, the dam inspection that I went to like two weeks ago, the guy said that they would send a report sooner rather than later, cuz they knew. The owner was waiting for this other program. Um, and we didn't get it, and then part of the dam fell out, so another inspector was there. Well, one of the same inspectors was there last week when I happened to stop by and.
This is, I mean, that's changed markedly.
Yeah. Okay.
So Paul, I would like you to be part of that if you're willing to.
This conversation, the dam project, yes, I obviously will, yeah.
So, but I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to wait on that until we get another inspector's report.
I just didn't know if it was on, I just wanted to make sure.
It was, it's on the agenda, but I, the situation has changed markedly.
Big time, yeah. Nope, got it.
All right, um, but I know that that's such an important water source, so just keep that in there. Um, we had local emergency management plan. We have that approved now that we have Norm, thank you, um, helping us out. That looks pretty good. So at this point, I would make a motion to move an executive session.
Wait, I just wanna ask Alfie one question.
Yep, please.
The Valley Lake Curve realignment, is that not gonna happen this year because you've suddenly had a few weeks of. Other stuff thrown at you?
Um, hmm, that's a good question.
Okay.
I, I. I would, I would like to continue to move on, on the, the galleys of it. So that in case we have a long fall, we could pull it off, so.
Okay.
There's still, there's still a chance.
Okay, so is it like a two or three-week project, or?
It's probably a three-week project.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
David was asking about that.
Did you guys take the land, did you hold the hearings and actually take the land for that project?
We don't, it's all on the same property. We don't have to take it.
It's all on the same land.
Okay, I just, we went through a nightmare up, up at the end of uh Cory Road, if you remember, so. I would, if, if there's any question at all, I would highly recommend holding the hearings and doing it, just so you don't end up with a problem later.
In this case, we're actually, in this case, we're, we're okay.
There's still might have to be.
Cory Road is, Cory Road continues to, Cory Road continues to be a nightmare.
No, the landowner is very cooperative.
So it's cuz it's on the same lot, they're saying you don't need to do.
Well, I think there's still might need to be a legal transfer right of way. That's what somebody told me. I don't know whether, who it was.
Well, I sent you guys the list of their concerns.
Oh, right, yeah.
And so we just probably go through that. They're very simple.
But they're all reasonable.
Yes, they want.
They're all very reasonable.
They want, um, it was, they want us to pay for the forester to re, to remap their property.
Right.
Cuz it changes their land use.
Their land use, yeah. Not by a ton.
Not by a ton, and there was one other, one other bigger one. Anyway, it was, it was like.
It was all fairly reasonable.
The lawyer had to do, and they provided an estimate for the lawyer. It was like five hundred dollars.
No, it's not bad.
I, I, I see that the benefit of having this road changed.
Is far outweighs all of those things, yeah.
So I think it's just, you know, the board has to go over those, those requests and just check them off as they get done.
Yeah, we can do that next one.
I think we should do that in two weeks.
Maybe it's just approved that the town will pay for those expenses.
Yeah, like official deed and right-of-way transfer must be reported. Town of Woodbury shall pay for any related expenses, including assistance by the landowner's attorney. Cost estimates would be presented to the town. Cut cleared hardwood into log length and store in a mutually agreeable location.
Yeah, that was the conversation that I had with them. I'm absolutely willing.
I don't think any of that is actually really difficult.
Yeah, no, no, they're being very reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll put this on, leave this on for next week?
We're gonna have to leave that on for next week.
Come, and we can go through.
But after we review it.
Yeah, well, I mean, yes, look at it again.
I've reviewed it, so.
Go through it one by one, and they can explain.
I did review it, but I would like to review it again.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, so.
Can I, you just signed this, this is for them to come in, um. Make sure our elevator down there is working properly.
This is the erosion pond.
Is that just the annual maintenance plan, or is that something extra because of the flood?
I believe it's just Chris.
Okay.
So it's okay for seventy-five years. Let's see where you're just barely awake. Yeah, the dam's there. So you don't put up the dam from, and it flowed down the way. It rolled and that stuff there. It seems like it just needs some more. And the tracks there, Margaret Electric came in, but I'm back to them, so that the gate at the end of the schoolway, that was. It was a huge open water back.
All right, so it is now seven thirty?
Right.
Yeah.
I'd like a motion to move into executive session. All those in favor? All right, Woodbury Select Board is in executive session as of six thirty PM on July seventeenth.